Amendments, I would like to ask that we have a five-minute recess before beginning. And that means. Hello, this again is Wednesday, August 24. It is now nine twenty a.m. We have completed the Board of Health meeting and we turn to a work session on the biannual code amendments. And April first, I believe, we turn to you for this presentation.
Thank you, Chair Bowerman, and I am going to have Ted present. He will start us off today. Ted?
Hello, good morning, Chair Bowerman, members of the council. This morning, we are going to go over the proposed biannual code updates with the council through this work session. This is part of a process associated with bringing forward proposed changes and getting them ultimately hopefully approved. As you can see from this slide, several members of the community development group are here, including April, who you see before you, Max Booth, Jennifer Reynolds with Engineering Services, and myself, Dan Young with the Fire Marshal's Office. Donna Goddard and Joan Cloud unfortunately could not be present today. So if there are questions concerning code amendments with, associated with animal protection and control, we'll do our best to answer those. Next slide, please. So the biannual code updates are traditionally completed twice per year. However, the process was, was put on hold when the pandemic started, so I believe the last round was done in 2019. The person that traditionally did those code updates, a staff person with the land use group is no longer with the county. So we do have new people that are taking the mantle for these code updates. And so we right now are starting with relatively minor updates. As you can see on the bottom of this slide, the updates, these updates are intended to address relatively minor code updates, including Scrivener's errors, reference updates and cleanups, clarification, and minor policy items. So we're trying to keep it fairly simple, at least for this round. So the process is that amendments are, well, staff comes together and proposes amendments. They're vetted through staff. We come together with a list that we bring forward and we give that list to community planning, as well as the attorney's office to vet what we have come up with. That process has been done. That brings us to the next step in the process, which is the work session with the county council. And at this session, the council would review what, what is being proposed for the biannual code amendments and hopefully give a thumbs up to proceed with the rest of the process. The rest of that process would include a follow-up work session with the planning commission for a recommendation on the proposed amendments. And then we would come back to the council for an official public hearing where the council would then give a final decision on these amendments. So our request of the council today is approval to proceed with the biannual code update process for the included amendment proposals. You have received two documents with proposed amendments associated with them. One document is, includes code enforcement, animal control, and fire marshal amendments. And the other document is mostly focused on planning and engineering. I would like to ask the council how they would like to proceed. We can go through each proposed amendment one at a time. Or if the council has targeted specific amendments they would like to discuss, we can pinpoint on those instead. Thank you.
What is your preference on that, council?
Chair.
Yes, Councilor Olson.
Thank you. I think just for the public good, I would, I would request that we just go through them even briefly, just so it's on the record in public for everybody, in case they don't want to dig into the details that are online.
Is that acceptable to all on council? Yes, let's do it that way. Ted?
Okay, great, thank you. We will, we can go ahead and start with the code enforcement, animal control, and fire marshal document. So we do have the fire marshal present, Dan Young, and I think the first couple would be items that he would cover.
Good morning, council, this is Dan Young with the Fire Marshal's Office. The first one that we have up here is to update the fee table to include open burning permit fees. This was found in our last audit that for some reason, we did not have the land clearing burn permit in. And so we're asking to put that in. It's a hundred and forty-two dollars. It's the same fee we've been charging, just without it being in the table. This is the same fee that is currently charged by Department of Natural Resources. That's why we've done the hundred and forty-two. So that way we're consistent with them. So land clearing is when people are cutting down trees, working them on their property. That way it's consistent if it goes through Washington State Department of Natural Resources or through the Fire Marshal's Office. And the difference is, is if they are going to land clear for land clearing and then building a house, it's through us. If they're land clearing and then replanting, it goes through the DNR. That's the distinction, so.
Is it just me, or did we have Dan freeze in his transmission?
I think we lost Dan.
Okay, could someone else continue with item two here, or section six?
So I do have a related pause question that somewhat related, not to land clearing, but burn permits in general. We had brought up a couple of years ago that with all the growth and urbanization, even outside the urban growth boundary, that staff was going to look at updating the burn map, where is permissible for residential burns to clear debris? I've never seen that, and I'm wondering if, if staff is in fact working on that.
And Dan is back, perhaps you could answer that for us.
I'm sorry about that, I don't know what happened, I'm actually out right now. What was your question, council, I just caught the last half?
Is the burn map available?
It was going to be the, the burn map where people are allowed to burn. It was going to be revisited and revised since it hadn't been revised in many years, despite the growth and urbanization out in the unincorporated area.
Yeah, so where burning is allowed, and if we go on GIS, there's a layer that tells you. So basically, if you're in the urban, you are not allowed to do land clearing burns, only in the rural. But I don't know, I can double check with GIS and find out what is going on with the, the map on that.
Yes, that is the question, because we were going to relook at updating that layer as you couched it on GIS, and I never heard another word.
Okay, I'll find out about that, that's new, that's the first time I've heard of that, but I can follow up on that.
Counselor, would that affect the burn permit? The amount, the one forty-two? No? Okay, very good.
No.
So shall we move on now to the next section?
Yeah. Okay, so we can keep scrolling down on that. Right there. So the next one is right here fireworks and the retail stand. The last time we did an update on the code, it was missed, that that should have stayed at a hundred dollars. And the reason for that is there's an RCW that states we can't charge more than a hundred dollars. And that is what we have been charging is the hundred dollars. So this is just updating the code here and the fee table. Very simple.
Here, I think Dan froze again.
Can you present, can you present April or someone else on the animal control?
I am the presenter for animal control because my animal control manager was called out to an emergency this morning. So, and I just want to reiterate, I understand biannual code amendments have not been done for two years. I just want to let the council know that this team, it is their first time doing a biannual code update. So that is why we have the very narrowed focus of minor adjustments and policy items. All right, so I will present animal control as much as I can. So we will start with number three, yep. And the current code is in conflict by adding the one word may, it will correct the conflict. Right now it says shall, and not all, not all items need to go to the hearings examiner. So it's just a one-word change from shall to may. Number four, the current code is in conflict by adding the underlying sentence, it will correct it. So this code section is currently written, conflict with duties of animal control advisory board. By adding the proposed language, it gives discretion to the program manager to decide which violations of Title H should be heard by the advisory board, or by the hearings examiner, because not all items need to go in front of those two. Number five is there are no current impound fees for livestock, and we need to add them. Livestock impounds are increasing in Clark County. And livestock actually takes longer to catch than dogs and cats, and there's no repercussion currently for the owner. Tell me if I'm going too fast. Number six, we wanted to update the cost for facility license, since it has not been updated in over a decade. It currently doesn't match the costs needed to do inspections and staffing for facility inspections. So this is an update to the fees. And I did forget to say at the beginning that Joanne, our program manager, already did present these to the animal control board and, and included their feedback. Number seven, and it is, it will be written because of their feedback, it will be written a little different than what you see here. And the feedback, we want to increase the, this is the barking dog noise disturbance period. We want to increase from ten minutes to twenty minutes of continuous barking for a period of forty-five minutes. And, and then the animal control board did want to add in at a minimum of three times per week, which I don't think is in this version, so we would want to be adding that.
Can I comment here, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so I think this is so hard to define, and I'm always on next door hearing about barking dogs and the difference between city ordinances and county ordinances. And I, at first glance, I think this change is in the wrong direction. You know, most, most of the problem is there are so many people out there that don't care. And they think they, they're barking dog, dogs bark, yes, so what? Yeah, when, unless you're next door to it, and it's all day. And it could be for three minutes. Every ten minutes, every hour of every day, and this code section won't cover that. You know, it's, it's really hard to define, but I think this is in the wrong direction in allowing longer periods of barking. Because there are dogs out there that just howl and screech, and they're usually left out, whether at night or during the day when people go to work, or they don't want to hear them crying in their own house. So they put them outside so their neighbor can hear it. You know, it's, it's always an owner issue. And I think, I don't like how you've redrawn this, I think it, it makes the situation worse, not better. I would like to see what the cities have done as examples. I would like to have it more uniform, so there aren't different rules, which causes problems all the time.
I have not received constituent feedback on this particular item. And perhaps this discussion that we're having right now will, will generate it. Although, Councilor Medvici, what you're saying makes perfectly good sense to me, just based on my own life experience. I, I think having a barking dog for as long as is described here would be quite bothersome.
I'm sure.
Yes, Counselor Olson.
April, can, can, where did this come from? Where did this change come from? I mean, we've got, we had ten, ten minutes and forty, and thirty minutes. I'm curious what the conversation was that led up to this proposed change.
I think that it is, and I'm, I'm presenting for Joanne, but I believe that it was, it's hard to enforce the barking dogs. We do have an increased pet since the pandemic in both the city of Vancouver, who we run animal control for, and unincorporated Clark County. And it takes a good amount of time on an animal, for an animal control officer to go to a residence for three minutes or a ten-minute continuous complaint. And they need to go there, and they need to listen for it. And then they need to make sure it's reoccurring, so they need to go back at a different time and listen to it again. It's hard to enforce for us.
So it sounds like then the idea would be that if this time was extended, that there would be fewer calls, or there's some, there's some anticipation that there would be some better enforceability of, of the code? If, if they had to wait for forty-five minutes rather than thirty minutes to call code enforcement?
I think for Joanne, thirty minutes of continuous barking is a nuisance. It's, it's difficult to say that ten minutes of a barking dog is a nuisance, when it might only be during someone's lunch period, or it's not after five. I mean, there are, there, it's hard to enforce with it only being ten minutes. And I think that, I think three minutes would be very difficult, because in the end, you do citations. There's not much else you can, you do with a barking dog complaint, other than cite, which we do today.
Are there comments or questions from the council?
Just the bottom line for me is I want to see what the cities have in code and put something in place that's more uniform. I want to have enforcement easier, and I want people to recognize as owners, they have an obligation to take care of their animals and, and for the benefit of their neighbors. And not that they just have free rein to leave the dog chained outside all day.
And we use the barking dog complaints as a chance to make sure that the animal is okay, sheltered. Even if they are tied up outside, they're sheltered, they're fed, they're watered. We do, and, and I think that complaints that go over thirty minutes would also indicate that, that, that the animal might be in distress.
That's good. So will, will it be possible to share with us in our next discussion, the, the city's rulings are, their resolutions, whatever you call them, on this, so that there can be some consistency?
Definitely, and do you want me looking? I think that I'll probably need to look a little bit further out, like Multnomah or Pierce or King, to be, to be able to get that for you. I don't think, we, you know, the city of Vancouver, this is, this is the same for them. And then the smaller cities.
I'm sorry, what did you say about Vancouver?
This is Vancouver's, this is the same for Vancouver, it's the ten minute.
They have ten minutes and then thirty minutes. So we're changing from what Vancouver has now. I see. And so I think, Counselor Medvici, if I'm reading you correctly, you're interested more in staying consistent with the cities.
Absolutely, let's make it easy for people to comply. It would be great as a best practice to go out and look for the best ordinance somewhere in the country, but that doesn't get to the fact that you're, you're going to have battleground and Camas and Waschugle and Vancouver and Richfield, and they're all going to have different rules, and, and I think that's not the right way to go.
So no worry about Multnomah County or any of that.
Okay, unincorporated. And they might have even already done this research before, you know, but I don't have them here today to know that for sure.
So my interest too is for consistency with the cities. That, that makes sense from a, a residence point of view, I think, to know when they can call for some help.
Okay. Noted, and I will look into it and I will present to you next time.
Great, thank you.
All right, number eight is added a requirement for livestock to have shelters. So right now cruelty cases, which are also on the rise, we, there isn't a requirement for livestock to have shelter, just domestic animals. So it would be adding in that requirement for livestock to have shelter outside of dairy and beef cattle. Okay, number nine, cruelty to animals, requirement to not allow a self-tightening or prong collar to be used when tethering an animal, because it can harm itself or cause death. So this is not when someone is using those items for a walk with a dog, but rather when they have it tethered to an inanimate object. Uh, number ten, found domestic animals. We'd like to work, we'd like to add the word designated agent, as we do not take lost and found reports. We allow humane society to do that on our behalf. So this is to get into code compliance.
Can, can I just go back and just ask a quick question as to, I consider our equestrian community a, a major stakeholder in our county. Have they been questioned about the shelter rule? Because I, I noticed there are a lot of equestrian shelters throughout the county that have, you know, it's just a roof. It just gives them protection from the sun. And a lot of horse owners believe that's sufficient and appropriate, despite our harsh winters or short-term harsh winters. So I just want to make sure that the equestrian community has, you know, on the technical aspect of that, is what's considered cruel or what's considered appropriate. So I'm concerned about that.
I will check with Joanne, but I do believe that at least a cover is considered a shelter, somewhere that they can go to get out of rain or out of the sun. I believe that that is what it is talking about. But I'm taking a note. Okay. Sorry, I'm having problems with my screen. Okay. Number eleven, dangerous dogs. And we're needing to define the proper enclosure, and is, as our code doesn't currently do that. A proper enclosure is important for dangerous dogs, and that is, that's what this is referencing. And here, we are using the verbiage from Vancouver Municipal Code, so that they just define an enclosure, and so that somebody couldn't create enclosure out of pallets or something that won't contain the dangerous dog.
Chair, if I can, this is Kathleen.
Yes, Kathleen.
I just want to clarify really quick with April, for animal control, we were talking about looking at the city codes as well, and making sure that they're consistent. We actually contract with the city, so we actually respond to city complaints through, in our local agreement. So it might be worth having a greater conversation with the city on if, what the amount of time makes sense, because regardless, they're not responding, our animal control is. And we do have a very small staff that is responding to a large geographical area. And I think that's what's contributing to being able to respond timely and being able to actually see and hear the ten minutes as well. So I would just ask April to check, chat with the city too, to see what makes sense. And I just want the council to be aware that we actually respond on behalf of them.
I would be very surprised if they haven't, but I don't know for sure, so I'm going to make sure. Number twelve is enforcement, and this is just changing the, the manager of animal protection and control from his to their. And then number thirteen is changing the penalty amounts as they have not been raised in over ten years. And they're still minimal compared to what it might take. And then fourteen, it is going to need to be changed after discussion with the animal control advisory board. This, there is a little bit of something that they want to be different. So any person appealing a determination under this title file in writing with the manager of animal protection and control program within thirty days. So they don't want us to reduce it to five days, they don't think that's enough time. So they still want to keep it thirty days. The only reason that the proposed change was there, because sometimes animals are in a dire enough position that they won't last thirty days. If, and so they would like to add that, in, in case, unless the case involves the health of an animal will, will not survive, then it would be reduced to five days. And I believe that's the end of animal control.
Questions or comments from council? Okay, let's go right ahead, April.
Thank you, council. All right, we should go into planning and development and engineering. And Ted, who is starting this one?
Thank you, I'll go ahead and start with the planning proposals. So the first one is a, and just an error in referencing this code section references, cross-references the wrong code section, so we just want to change that from seven point three to seven point six section. The next one, it's been identified that this section of code includes all rural areas, but for some reason left out the RC one and the RC two point five zones in this section. This zone, it was concluded should include all rural zones, and for some reason, those were excluded. So we just, for consistency sake, we wanted to make sure these, the rural center zones were included in this code section. This item number three is a clarification. We get some confusion from the development community on this. This section need just clarifies that a wall is required under these circumstances. If an L four standard is required, then a wall is required. This section references the F two standard, and sometimes that creates some confusion in that a applicant or developer might get confused, because the F two standards talks about fences and sight obscuring. But we just wanted to make sure that when this section of code references the F two standards, that it is only referencing the sight obscuring standards of that section, and it doesn't allow somebody to not install a wall, but to install. And it doesn't allow somebody to not install a wall, but to install a fence instead. So this is just clarification of this code section clears up some confusion with the development community. The next one, item number six, this is essentially an error where the note, the referenced note number two has the wrong setback number in there. The table has 10 feet. And then it references the note which talks about 20 feet. So we're just making a correction to that there. So that the note says 10 feet and is consistent with what is shown in the table. The next few are development engineering. Jennifer Reynolds is with us and I'll let her address these. Thank you. Unless there are any questions on what I covered.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Reynolds. Introduce me. So this first one up, these are, so I'm with development engineering and the changes that I'm going to go over are related to the transportation standards. This first one, it just removes redundant language with regard to paid back on public roads. Right now, our paid back standard is in a later section of the code. So to have this code language in this section is really just redundant and doesn't really change the applicability of the paid back requirement.
Chair Bower, and this is Ted again. This one is actually, we're back to a planning or land use item. If the council will recall, this recreation space versus landscaping requirement came up with the council in July, on July 19th. The council in a public hearing was presented with this item to make this change before you and in or to allow overlap, approve an interim ordinance to allow overlap between the required recreation space and landscaping. So at that time, on July 19th, the council did approve an interim ordinance to allow the overlap. What this is this is proposing, this would propose a permanent change to the ordinance with the language you see double underlined that would essentially allow permanently allow for this overlap between recreation space and landscaping. I know, I believe Steve Archer from the attorney's office is on. I didn't know if he wanted to go into the rationale section of this and what has occurred since that decision. So if Steve is on, maybe he could pop in and provide some some information to the council on this section.
Thank you, Ted. Chair Bowerman and council, this is Steve Archer. And the explanation below in the rationale addresses the interim ordinances of July 5th and July 19th and the subsequent referendum petition proposal. Rather than read through it, what I would suggest is if the if the council and chair have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to, or I'd be happy to provide an explanation at your wish.
Chair, you're muted.
Chair, you're still muted. We can't hear you.
Thank you. Didn't even know it. Steve, it would seem to me that many would have the question, why would the permanent language come into play now? And so if you could address that, that I think would be appreciated by some.
Thank you. And first, I would, the term permanent may be a little imprecise. It would be, this would be a amendment to the code to Title 40. I wouldn't use the term permanent because any code amendment can be amended in the future. With regard, at this time, the interim ordinance interim ordinances are temporary by nature. This process in order, the interim ordinances do not amend Title 40. This process would, should the council choose would amend Title 40 to make this change part of the code. And with respect to that, and of course, this would also go to the planning commission for its recommendation in public hearing by the planning commission. Does that address your?
Does the council have any need for additional explanation there? Okay, thank you, Steve.
Chair Bowerman, members of the council, I believe the remainder of the items are development engineering. So Jennifer Reynolds will work through these with you.
Us. So this next one is about creating a separate definition for public versus private alleys. Currently, we only have one definition in code. That speaks to alleys and that's really just for a public alley, but with recent code additions for narrow lots. We do have private alleys now. So just creating two definitions that specify, you know, what exactly is a public alley versus a private one. This this third one is kind of back to the first one about driveway payback, paid back and the requirements for those. Generally, for any approach permit that someone applies for to get access from a driveway to the public road, they would require an approach permit and they would require to pay back that driveway. Those standards are listed in a section that doesn't really apply when someone does apply for the approach permit. So this is just a way to reference that code section in the applicable code standard that someone would be responsible for when they apply for the approach permit. The next one just clarifies as existing to the code language about flag lots and joint driveways being exempting, being exempted from spacing standards. A lot of times developers want to kind of use this code section. They want to create a flag lot and use this code section to exempt them. And that was not the intent. It was to allow an exemption for existing flag lots. This next one really just adds language. So right now it says all new driveways longer than 300 feet are required to have a turnaround and turnouts. If they exceed a certain length, we also wanted to add modified and extended because in times when people pull building permits, they're adding maybe an ADU and they're having to modify or extend the driveway. So we would also also to stay consistent with the fire ordinance as well, where they use that language. We would like to add it to this transportation section as well. This next one is really just kind of clarifying. Some applicants tend to maybe use this code section with regard to residential driveway site distance to exempt themselves from the other sections of code regarding site distance. So it's really just clarifying what applies to, you know, new rural or urban driveways that have a speed limit of 25 miles per hour. And it's also in line with the Washtot standards for driveways onto a public road. Next one just removes the 20 mile per hour speed limit. There are no public roads that are signed 20 miles per hour.
What is this again? If you wouldn't mind just explaining it once more.
This last one, so that, sorry, this is a table that provides the intersection site distance requirements and just the site distance that you're required to have on a certain speed of road. And so this table just outlines for each speed what that site distance is. But we want to just take out the 20 miles per hour road just because there are no public roads within Clark County that are signed less than 25 miles per hour.
I see. Thank you.
This last one is about, kind of goes with our road modification code. I mean, just clarifying what classifies as a minor deviation to code, which wouldn't require an engineer to provide the justification that can just be done by anyone versus what should be required to be a technical road mod that would require an engineer to prepare that justification. The two changes we wanted to make were with regard to alternative hammerhead designs on private driveways and roads. Right now that would require a technical, but we have been reviewing them under a minor deviation, which requires less scrutiny and does not need to go to our internal road mod review team. The other one is to for lower classified roads or any, any, so I guess the local access roads, which are not the classified, you know, collector or car roadways. Those currently are, if someone wanted to make changes to that roadway design, they're listed under a minor deviation. I feel that those should be a technical road mod just because this is a public road, it is a public asset and those kind of alternative designs to public roads should be more scrutinized and and prepared by an engineer to provide that analysis. The last one, or I don't know if that's the last one, but the next one clarifies the reference to the trip generation or pass by information when determining impact fees. I think right now there's the reference in the the code to find a trip generation for the traffic impact fee is not called out correctly. And then the the reference also needs to be changed to provide an all encompassing list of the land use categories rather than, you know, just the abbreviated list in the TIF handbook. I think there's been a disconnect between, you know, what the actual land use is and then trying to fit it into one of those limited categories that's in the TIF handbook rather than actually using the you know, the ITE's trip generation handbook. So that's really just clarifying where what information could be used to bestly match the correct tip fees for the land use category. This last one. I, so it, this is about corner lot driveway, corner clearance. Right now they're required to have 40 feet. And this was a recent, not, I think this was changed at the last biennials back in 2019, or maybe it was the time before. But the the code language, essentially the code language that was added then is proposed to be removed. It's been very hard to implement that that code language being if there's a parked car within the site distance, then the engineer has to could propose traffic control devices to mitigate the site distance if site distance can't be met. The the issue with that has just been very hard to implement and it it does create kind of a hardship on these narrow lots where almost anytime there would be a parked car within the the driveways on narrow lots. And parked cars aren't really considered, it's not a fixed object. It is a movable object per Washtot. So to kind of have this language within the access code, taking site distance out of the site distance code and putting it in an access code and then also having mitigation measures like stop signs that might not be appropriate in these kinds of situations. It's just been very hard to implement and we do, we have kind of approved a lot of road modifications for these instances. So just the, just taking out this code language would allow us to better implement this policy as it was intended to be. I think that is the last one.
Questions or comments?
Bowerman, I do have a comment, if that's okay.
Dirty.
I've done the research, councillor Medvee, and Waschuggal, Camas, Battleground and Vancouver all have the 10 minutes for 30 minutes. So they have current code language that we have today.
So councillor, would you like to extend your thoughts on that then?
Well, I'm always looking for better code, especially in those difficult areas that are hard to enforce. I think there's a very strong argument to have consistency with the cities, not change it, make it longer. I actually think that's harder to enforce because literally if you extend it to 45 minutes of barking, your code officer actually has to be a witness for 45 minutes. You know, that I I would go back to what what the cities generally have. I'm sorry, did you include Vancouver? Does include, has, okay. Yeah, I, so I don't like changing it to extend the time.
Okay, thank you.
I have just a simple question on alleys. You went to the trouble to distinguish public from private alleys. If you're just driving by an alley, how can you tell the difference?
It would be mostly signage.
Oh, is there signage required?
Yes, all streets are required to be signed, whether they're public or private.
So you, this is considered a street?
Yes, the alley is, it is numbered.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? April, does that conclude the presentation of the the different code amendments?
Yes, Chair, it does. So we would, excluding the barking dogs, we would like permission to be able to work on this and move forward to a oh my gosh. The work session with the planning commission.
April, this is all about a work session with the planning commission and also a public hearing with the planning commission. The work session is to educate the planning commission and the public and also for the public and the planning commission to ask clarifying questions followed by their hearing where they will then be making recommendation or not to the council for their own hearing. So it's a two steps.
Just a a quick question, is the public hearing with council or with the planning commission? I had earlier heard council, that's why I asked.
No, the the first cycle would be a public work session with the planning commission and a hearing with the planning commission before the matter comes back to the council for your own work session or hearing.
Madam Chair.
Yes, councillor Olson.
Thank you. Just just for a process perspective with regard to the barking dog issue and direction to staff, should we weigh in as a majority on that topic? I don't know that we've actually done that specifically. So just, I don't know, we do, we do it as a vote or we just say, hey, we all agree that, you know, we should stick with the current language or.
Let's do another thumbs up on that if if we could. How many, yeah, we'd like to have it consistent with the cities. We're there. Thank you.
I thought we might be, but I just thought for the record it would be.
It's a good idea. It's a good idea. Um, and April, I'd like for you to, uh, reinforce something that was a question prior, uh, from the, uh, community. Uh, there was question on, yes, I understood that your, uh, amendments here were for minor policy, but they wanted to know why not housing options? And the housing option strategies, would you talk about that a little bit? Are, are those not considered, um, minor policy updates or what is the situation?
So, uh, thank you, Chair. I, and, and Oliver, please correct me if I'm wrong, but Oliver is already working on, um, the affordable housing and a presentation on how to go forward that. So with, with those, I believe that he would take on those code changes. And no, they would not be considered minor on, uh, on a lot of levels.
So Oliver, uh, will they be coming forward to council soon?
Yes, we, thank you, councillor and Madam Chair. Um, if you recall councillors, we completed that housing action plan which the council approved and asked us, community planning, to work on the short-term strategies, which may include code and broad policy, uh, may have other, um, development regulations to consider. We are yet to begin that work. If you recall councillors, we asked for additional funding through, through the upper, uh, request that the council approved. We will be using that funding to continue to engage with our, uh, consultant and, uh, stakeholders to work through the short-term strategies. If it leads to development regulations and other policy derivative that we may be coming back to the council with. That work is yet to, uh, be studied.
Very good. Thank you. Um, is there a motion for, um, the biannual code amendments to go to work session with the planning commission and then to, uh, public hearing with that planning commission?
I'll make that motion and as, as long as we do exclude the barking door changes.
Thank you for that exclusion. That should be specified. And is there a second?
Okay. Second.
Thank you. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, it is unanimous that we move that to work session with the planning commission, et cetera, with the proper exclusion of the barking dogs.
Chair Bowerman?
Yes.
I just wanted to follow up on Councillor Mevaji's question on the burn maps. So I already reached out to staff and it looks like they were updated in May of 2019. So I'm not sure if that conversation was prior to May 19, but I have asked staff to provide a summary of what the changes were in 19 and we can send that out to council.
Yeah, so thanks for that. I, it may have been around 2019 that we had that conversation. So maybe it changed and, and it was updated and it just never came back to us.
And I presume that that is shown on the web now, Kathleen?
Yes, if you go under GIS and have those quick maps, so a list of all, and you just go down, it says burn map and you can click on that. There was an update in August of this year, but that was probably just a normal update that we do, um, over a weekend that we do periodically. But the actual main updates that map was in 2019.
Okay, um, I am looking back at, uh, the agenda and I presume that this work session is, uh, concluded at this point and that we are now ready to move into council time.